Okay, well, we'll open the meeting with a...
Let's lead us to the flag. United States of America and two, three, four, the rich and saints, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next thing, the clerk will take the road call.
Dale Ames.
Here.
Harold Jurgensen.
Here.
Barry Wagner.
Here.
Robert Schiller.
Yep.
Jason Alders.
Here.
Helen Carroll.
Here.
Kristen Moon.
Here.
Jeff Peelong.
Here.
And Liz Becklin.
At this time, we're going to have the clerk read the meeting policies.
The agenda as printed or amended will be followed, so all necessary and needed actions by the council will be addressed. The agenda can be amended by proper motion for discretion items only. Business from the floor is welcome and allotted for on our agenda. When comments from the floor are made, you must first be recognized by the chair, second, state your name and address for the record, and third, you will have no more than three minutes to state your comment or concern. Copies of the agenda and other handouts are available on the back table. Please sign in, and please turn all cell phones off.
Okay, at this time, I think I'll turn it over to Mayor Peelong. He's got an announcement to make.
So for the commission members and those in the audience that may not know, the city has hired a new clerk treasurer, Lori Strike, and the audience here tonight is our new clerk treasurer. She was with us a couple of years back. She went to St. Francis for about a year and a half, and now she has taken the position full-time as clerk treasurer. She started on Monday, and we welcome her, and you'll get a chance to meet her personally later, but I want to make sure that you knew that we had made that change and we're moving forward now. And in that, I also want to take this opportunity to thank Ellen because she's been doing above and beyond for many months here, keeping us going and attending all our meetings and doing a great job for us. So I want to also thank you publicly for that. So, thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll go on and we'll approve or amend tonight's meeting minutes, April 23rd, 2019. Somebody like to make this motion? I assume move. Somebody like to second it?
I'll second it.
Okay, Commissioner Alders seconded. Any discussion? See, and then I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. The next thing we're going to do is approve the joint meeting minutes of January 22nd, 2019. This has already been approved by the council. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Commissioner Schiller made the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Jurgensen seconded.
Commissioner Alders, actually.
Oh, did I say the wrong one?
Yeah.
You look a lot like him.
Okay. Which is the best looking. Okay, seeing there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, we're going to have our first public, or our only public hearing today, a request by John Wagner and Windsor Holdings, LLC, pin number 21-33-25-33-0015. That's 7900 Old Viking Boulevard for the following two applications. There's one application for zoning request map amendments to change the existing C1 commercial zoning to 11 industrial in compliance with Section 11-12 of the City Code. And also, the second one's going to be an interim use permit to allow outdoor storage in association with municipal builders' general contractor business on this plus or minus six acre property in compliance with Section 11-3-9.D.D.4 and Section 1110 of the City Code. So at this time, we'll turn it over to the planner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll give a brief summary of the planning report, and the applicant, Mr. Wagner, is in the audience if we have any questions. So Mr. Wagner has owned land in the city for quite some time. As I indicated in the report, he more recently acquired the parcel at Old Viking Boulevard and Nowland Boulevard, somewhat of a trade of land from that he owned in the industrial park. He did come before the city council in 2017 and had a comprehensive plan amendment approved to be removed from the frontage road plan because the adopted frontage road plan showed a future road bisecting the property. So that was removed, and at the time, he presented a conceptual plan for his property that was discussed. He does lie on the very northern border of the commercial zone here on the east side of Nowland Boulevard. This is the proposed site plan. The front portion is an office facility, and the rear portion of the building is warehousing. And in addition to that, he's requesting the interim use permit for this outdoor storage in the back area. The very, very back will be untouched, at least in the first phase. And so there's a single access onto Old Viking Boulevard. If you go one way, you come to the parking lot in front of the office area, and then if you go the other way, you come through the gate here and access the rear lot area. So these are concrete pads that surround the building where the doors are. For the most part, the city has been allowing Class V in the screened areas within outdoor storage yards for machinery and equipment. The front entryway and the drive up to the parking lot should be paved. He does have to make just some minor changes to the site plan. As far as the rezoning goes, we need to discuss that as well. As I indicated in the report, the comprehensive plan is designated both for commercial or industrial development on this parcel. The zoning right now is commercial, which is indicated by this whole piece in the red, his piece being up in this northern section. His proposed use is actually more industrial because of the percentage of his building that is warehouse versus the smaller portion that is office. And typically, you've got the larger outdoor storage areas with industrial uses. The commercial zone does not allow warehousing as a permitted use. Typically, that's more appropriate in the industrial district. One thing that didn't occur to me until after the report was circulated is that we could consider a split zone for the property. In other words, the front half could be commercial and could include the office, and the rear half could be industrial. So that's something to talk about as well, but we can go through those zoning criteria and make sure that he meets those. Let's see here. So the proposed building is a combination of Verseta stone, the stucco panels, and steel shakes. This is the side facing Nowland Boulevard. This is the north elevation along Old Viking. So the entrance to the office faces Old Viking with the parking lot out in front, and then the two overhead doors there. The south side facing the Perkins property has the three overhead doors as well and no entrance, no pedestrian entrance on that side, with the lean-to off the east end. This is the east end facing some of the residential development that's existing. This is just a structure rock is what the stucco look-alike, or faux stucco, I guess, if you want to call it, panels. That's the name. I'm not sure if this is the exact specified product. There are several levels of, I guess, quality and makeup that structural uses, they're going through structural buildings. The proposed fence is just like Dave Perkins next door with the metal on the frame and a cap on top. This is the Verseta stone that is the wainscot on portions of the building as well as some of the fence posts. This is just a sketch that Mr. Wagner did showing kind of how the fence connects to the building, this being the Perkins property here. So Nowland Boulevard would be over on this side. So the fence is set back from Nowland Boulevard, allowing for ponding and landscaping on that side, and the same holds true for the Old Viking Boulevard side. This is a graphic that our office, TPC, prepared, showing areas that we would recommend that really should have landscaping. There's no official landscaping plan submitted now, and that would be a requirement before we look at this again. The yellow areas are indicating the 100-foot required buffer zone adjacent to all residential uses, and that is something required for both commercial and industrial developments. Now, the reason I've highlighted this is that with an existing lot of record such as this, and especially with its unique shape, it becomes somewhat of a burden to provide this amount of screening, which takes up such a large amount of lot area. So I'm proposing or suggesting that we consider a variance to the 100-foot screening and come up with a recommendation to the city council for what would satisfy you as far as screening goes. And I've shown here some trees moving the fence out a little ways from the property line. In some areas, just the fence itself could be adequate. He is going above and beyond our minimum standards, which are chain link and, you know, which contain the slats. That would probably be the cheapest type of screening to put in, but he has offered up a fence like Mr. Perkins, as well as, in the front here is where he's proposing those pillars with the stone to make it look nice along Nowland Boulevard and Old Viking And this is a park plan, the city's park and trail plan. Just wanted to highlight that I did speak with Anoka County regarding the two county trails. There is a proposed county trail, regional trail that goes up Nowland Boulevard, and another one that traverses Old Viking Boulevard. The county is not in a position right now to acquire any land or build those trails. One, I believe the Nowland Boulevard Trail does have an adopted design, but they haven't moved any further than that, and the one along Old Viking has not been designed yet. This is just two older aerial photos of the property showing that this lot configuration has been in existence. This one is from 1985, and this one's even earlier, from 1977, when the old Greenberg Implement Dealer was in operation. This is showing the proposed or possible split zoning that we could discuss. This shows the commercial area in front of the property, and then this shows it in relation to the surrounding area. So with that, I'd like to open it up for discussion. On the very last page, page nine of the report, there's kind of a bullet list of things that need to be addressed.
Before we go into discussion, can we hear from the applicant? If he's got anything he'd like to add here?
Sure, you could ask him.
Advocate, would you like to add anything?
John Wagner, living in Andover, do I need to state my holographs?
No, you're fine. We have it on record.
What is it called, screening, Liz? The 100-foot screening around...
Yeah, the buffer.
Buffer.
Yes.
And that's something that I had never heard of until Liz mentioned it to me roughly a week ago. And, you know, I guess had I known anything like that, I probably wouldn't have swapped the property with A&amp;B Crane. I don't know if all of you know, but I had the two five-acre, or two two-and-a-half acre lots, total of five acres, north of A&amp;B Crane, and we traded that five acres for six acres of it now. So I had three, I actually had three lots originally in the industrial park, and, you know, Bill kind of talked me into swapping for this, and I thought it was a more attractive corner. So we've, some of the sketches and the plans that I show, I mean, we're going to go with a fence, the fence color, the fence type would be similar to Perkins or the same as Perkins. The color of the fence would match whatever we do with the building. We're not exactly sure what the colors we're going to go with on the building yet. There's, whatever the Verseta stone is, basically that'd be a wainscot around the whole front of the building that's in front of the fence, and it'd actually be full height where the entrance is, and then there's actually pillars on the corners that are full height, both on the office and the shop. And then we're, yeah, there, we're kind of, we're using that same pillar approach on the fence, both on both sides of the gate, and corner pieces, and kind of equally spaced around the perimeter in the front there, just to carry on that same stone pillar effect. So with the stone in between that matches the building, I think that's going to make a very nice-looking front to the building, and, you know, the landscaping will, I've always been accused of overdoing things. I mean, we don't have a landscaping plan yet, but the whole front would be irrigated, you know, the whole front would be irrigated, mowed, and landscaped nicely, and we can certainly come up with a landscape plan, you know, before the next week. So I would, you know, it's my, it's always been my intent to spend, you know, the money to street size the building to make, you know, the building very attractive. I mean, we're going to have a pond on the corner. You know, at one time, I was even thinking of having a fountain in the pond or something and maintaining the water level in that pond. That's proving to be a little difficult, but it's still something we're exploring. But what we plan on doing there, I see, is really enhancing the looks of the corner. The building that we're designing, I mean, I just drove around the industrial park here just a year or two ago again, and I think the looks of our property, our lot, our building is going to rival the looks of any of them in the industrial area currently. And I think it's going to be one of the nicest little properties there. So that's about all I have for now. I can answer questions later if there's any questions.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I'm going to ask the clerk at this time, if all the legal mailings and postings has been completed. Should we go into this discussion before we go to the public, if they have some input?
No, you could open the public hearing now if you'd like, and then discuss it after we hear comments.
Okay, we'll open it up now for the, now here, the public, if anybody in the public has any comments they want to make on this, what's going on, it's right across the street here. And our clerk going to read a letter.
This is from Kelly Melborn to the Nowland Planning and Zoning Committee. I am writing with concerns of rezoning 7900 Old Viking Boulevard from a commercial zone to an industrial zone. Kelly doesn't have her address on here, so I don't know if that is...
She's on Sperry right next to, she's left, Delphos right next to...
Can you give us the address afterwards for the record?
Yes.
And to an industrial zone, and with having an interim use permit allowing outdoor storage with municipal builders on that site. My family, which includes young children, lives off Sperry Road. We moved from the sprawling congested suburbs to our current five-acre home in Nowland three years ago. We love the proximity to stores and restaurants, but most of all, we love the country feel that Nowland brings. By having a zoned industrial area located both across Nowland Boulevard and across Old Viking Boulevard makes that country feeling we love begin to disappear. Nowland is home to numerous bird and mammal species. I am a biology major, and my husband is an ecology major. We have a lot of respect for wildlife and nature, and we want to continue seeing deer, fox, coyotes, birds of prey, cranes, waterfowl, raccoons, opossum, and otters come through our property. We want to continue to hear the beautiful sounds of the songbirds that nest on our property. What will happen when an industrial area goes in next to a residential area? My guess is these species will find a quieter spot to live. Our kids will miss out on the opportunity to watch these animals pass through their property. They will lose the country feel of Nowland and instead grow up listening to more trumps go by, more workers shouting, more city noises, which we thought we moved away from. Why would another area need to be zoned industrial when there are still open lots in the industrial parks of Nowland? In addition to having concerns about the wildlife, we have concerns with the infrastructure and safety of our dirt road. Over the past three years that we have lived here, we have seen an increase in the amount of traffic our road gets from nonresidents. If an entrance to an industrial area is across Sperry Road, how will that affect the dirt road? It only gets graded once a year, and we continually have potholes in which we fill with our own dirt frequently. How will traffic be deterred from using the convenience our road will offer? I will not feel safe having my kids ride their bikes on the road or stop to look at the ponds for waterfowl or pick wildflowers on the roadside, again, losing the country feel. Finally, besides our concerns with the wildlife and safety of our road, we are concerned about our property value. With now two industrial areas less than a block from our house, what will happen to our property value if/when we decide to sell? How can we sell the country feel with added noise and air pollution only steps away? We understand the allure of Nowland, but we do not understand why an industrial zone needs to be placed so close to a residential area when there's already an industrial area within city limits. Please decline the request by John Wagner/Winter Holdings, LLC to help maintain the country feel that so many of us have fallen in love with. Sincerely, Kelly Melborn.
Okay, are there any other comments in the audience? Yes, speak up to the mic, please.
As a resident of 19931 Sperry Road Northwest, neighbors of the law horns. So we request that you do not rezon this land. This is the residential area where families are being raised. Approving the request at a business part area will further diminish the quaint feel of our town. There's already a lot of light pollution coming from the industrial area, and we feel another storage facility will just increase that light pollution. In addition, we take our small children on walks on Old Viking, and if you rezon this land, we'll increase traffic to Old Viking Boulevard and create unsafe neighborhoods for our kids. In addition to creating traffic, there are another storage business in the area will diminish the look of our town. This land is near our city park and would be the first thing many people see when they come to our community. Rezoning a space to have outdoor storage will make our city feel and look like a storage yard, not the country setting promised, in other spoken. We also have concerns about the wildlife in the area, and again, there's an industrial area right across the street. Why not use that? Some concerns that I had just based on the proposal that you laid out is the 100-foot barrier for landscaping. I think that if this is approved, that would be essential because this is an area where wildlife does grow, and creating that, or making that an exception would just further diminish the feel of our town. I know that you said it's a burden, but having an outdoor storage facility feels like a burden that has already here. Yep, and the trails, just because they're not our area of origin, I don't think that's a reason to sell off the land that we have for them and rezon the areas. And another thing is, we already have an industrial area, so we need to use that for this and maintain the commercial areas that are rezoned so that we can keep our town residential.
Okay, thank you.
I have it in a letter too, if you'd like, with our address.
Anybody else in the audience?
Yeah, from Wade Jemby, Chelsea's husband, the president of 19931 Sperry Street Northwest. From the property in question, we're, you know, just really a couple hundred feet away. So for me, the big thing is the light, the noise. We live directly across from A&amp;B Welding, an industrial property, and rezoning this to be, to be industrial is, you know, it's going to bring all those things that Chelsea mentioned, same things in the letter, but, you know, the light, the noise, the traffic, when you live right next to it, it stinks, you know? We deal with it every day, so we'd rather...
And you've lived here, we've lived here for five years, and the increase, the amount of businesses, industrial things that are coming to town, the traffic has increased by at least 100% since we moved in five years ago. And if you continue to rezon land to bring in more businesses, families like us aren't going to want to raise our kids anymore.
So I know that recently too, there was a similar situation at the intersection of County Road 47 and 22, where rezoning was in question, and it was denied based on the fact that we didn't want that type of building, that type of facility on one of the main roads in Nowland. Well, Nowland Boulevard is, I mean, it can't get any more main road than that, especially right here, and the way that it sits now, it looks really nice. If you go and stand at that intersection, you have four nice grassy corners all the way around, A&amp;B Welding and Coaches a little bit, but developing that land and turning it industrial is, is just not that country feel that, you know, many members of the community are looking for. And so I guess with that, I'll close, and thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you.
One more thing, I'm sorry. One thing I forgot. Again, as Liz was talking, that, so the 100-foot, you know, buffer next to the residential property, that is in place for a reason, those very things that I'm talking about. So, you know, I would definitely request to, you know, to the city council that no variance be allowed if, you know, in fact, the rezoning takes place in the project, those that had this planned, you know, that would be just one more request for the lights, the noise, that type of thing. Thank you.
Is there anybody else out here that'd like to make comments to this? Yes.
If there are no other public comments, I wouldn't mind just responding to a couple of those people.
Okay, go ahead.
Is that okay? Just a little background for this site. This corner has been zoned commercial since before we became a city, and it's been used commercially longer than that. It was an implement sales lot in association with this other property to the south. It's located on a corner of an arterial street, meaning a major street intersection here. Old Viking used to be a county road... Old Viking used to be a county road, it has since been turned over to the city. With regard to the trails, by allowing Mr. Wagner to develop the property, that does not eliminate the potential for trails. The county, the only time the city can acquire right of way for trails is when a property is split. And because he's not proposing any splits, we can't ask for that right of way, but the county would come through and buy that right of way or by establishing easement to establish those future trails. It's just that they're not ready to do that right now. I agree that, you know, the look of a vacant parcel, it probably does have some wildlife use at the present time. But again, there's something to called property rights and the cities have to consider the highest and best use for a property. And so it's not unreasonable to think that its current zoning C1 could be changed to a zoning of I1. We could allow a good portion of what he's doing in the C1 as its current zone. For instance, the outdoor storage is allowed as our office uses. Also, the commercial areas actually generate more traffic than industrial uses do. So we could have, you know, any number of things go in here. A gas station, retail stores, office buildings. A lot of different things would be allowed as it is presently zoned. So again, in the terms of compatibility with residential uses, industrial is actually more compatible than commercial, generally speaking. Obviously, uses vary and it depends on specific uses, but.
What if the access to this lot was off of the building road instead of Old Viking? That's a huge concern. Is that in traffic to that smaller road and that's his main access point to that? We often walk across the road in industrial areas and Old Viking is getting more and more busy and just having cars turning in there all the time and big people's trailers with their outdoor storage stuff. It's just not safe. And I know you say it's already zoned for outdoor storage, but already many yards of places in our community look like it's a big giant trash pit and having, your building is very nice there. I'm not saying that the building's not lovely, but having just random big outdoor storage is just about the tackiest thing that a town can put right in the center of their city.
Regarding the access, the county will not allow direct lot access onto Now Then Boulevard when another local street is involved, so that is a requirement of the county. So we have to give him access off of Old Viking. He has aligned it with Sperry Road on purpose. It is a recommendation typically desired by, you know, engineering standards. I don't deny that Old Viking is a very busy road and so is Now Then Boulevard. But these, the users of Mr. Wagner's site, the employees, they have no reason to go up Sperry Road. The traffic usage is going to be right to Old Viking and then onto Now Then Boulevard. He doesn't have any customers, so to speak, that come to the facility on a regular basis. Yeah, I agree, the buffer issue is something we need to discuss, but it's a situation where, well, the interim use permit is intended to be approved, requested by an applicant so that the city has the opportunity to review the screening requirements. So any outdoor storage area is required to have screening. What we're saying about the hundred foot buffer is that at some point, it does become unreasonable and somewhat of a burden in terms of the property, the property shape and the fact that this property has been this way for quite some time. So in other words, if this property were just a rectangular shape and all he had was one small, you know, one side being up against residential, it would be a different situation.
However, residents like us moved here because of those strict land use regulations and strict buffers that the city has in place. We would not have chose this town if it didn't have such stringent buffers.
Maybe so, but you're also, okay. You are in close proximity to an existing commercial industrial zone. The corner, the quadrant in general, has generally been zoned commercial industrial, like I said, since before we were a city. So we'll leave it up to the planning and zoning to make a recommendation. We can certainly have a discussion in this regard as far as screening goes. I guess that's all I have to say right at this time. Thank you.
Okay, getting back to you, wanted to look over this different items here.
Page nine is kind of a laundry list of items we should discuss. And then things that he needs to do prior to the next meeting. Last page of the report.
What's the title on it, Liz? Is that a letter from you to Shane or from Shane to you?
Uh, no, it'd be page nine of the actual planning report, so it'd be right before the applications and everything in the packet.
What about the, the items from Shane, is that going to be addressed?
Oh, you want me to chat about that? Okay. The city engineer Shane Nelson couldn't, not complete it. He didn't have enough information to complete a review of the property. But certain things like, certain things like drainage calculations and other details are many times not required until later before the applicant gets a building permit. But I asked Mr. Nelson to make a list of things that he felt had to be addressed. I know the engineers worked hard, Mr. Wagner's engineers worked hard to come up with the design for the stormwater ponds and, you know, get the building at a desirable elevation. The, Mr. Wagner will have to complete a wetland delineation officially. He did have, there's a small corner of wetland down in the southeast portion of the site. The field work has to be done and since they can only do that during the growing season, that needs to be completed. And then Shane is requesting a geotechnical report. The details for the pavement areas, like I stated, Mr. Nelson didn't think it was clear that the front area was paved versus what the surfacing was in the outdoor storage area. So like I said before, anything behind the fence can be gravelled, but anything in front has to be paved. We do need to have the fire chief look at the site to be sure the turning radiuses and everything are adequate and there can be access around the building in case of an emergency. And then approval from Anoka County Highway Department. They have to review the ditches and ponds along Highway 5. And then Mr. Nelson also stated that there's a setback of 10 feet required for parking or driving areas. But I believe that that's been met because he doesn't have any parking or drive lanes up here. Generally, if we have a fence or screening, we would allow it to go up to the property line, depending on the situation, so we can talk about that a little bit more. Okay, I guess so. Do you want me to just go through the list or do you want to talk about what concerns you the most first? Or how would you like to proceed, Mr. Chair?
Let's go through the list.
Go through the list, okay. So rezoning. Can all the rezoning criteria be met? Those were outlined in the report. Starting on page three. The first one is consistency with the city comprehensive plan. And the proposed project is consistent with the comprehensive plan because of the designation that's commercial and industrial, joint designation. The compatibility with present and future land uses of the area. As I stated, in my opinion, I don't believe that the I1 or C1 zoning is more or less compatible with the adjacent uses than the other. We have some existing residential uses that we consider interim uses that have been there a very long time. The houses along Now Then Boulevard. Eventually, those homes will be redeveloped to a commercial or industrial use, commercial as it stands now. The one home here to the east of the property would be our primary concern as well as any, there is one down in this area, most of Mr. Wagner's south property line abuts Mr. Perkins, another commercial slash industrial use. There is one residential property down here, but we have the wetland as a buffer, which is a legal buffer, and stormwater ponds can also be used as a buffer. So my recommendation would be to focus on what landscaping or screening you'd like along this residential use, whether the fence is adequate at six feet, if it's a solid construction similar to Mr. Perkins. And then what, if anything, you see along here. There is an extensive row of trees on this residential property at the present time. And there's also quite a gap between the property line and the home in this vicinity. I had a graphic showing the setbacks to the residences. The home is over here, so there is kind of an open space between there and the applicant's property line. So, um, do you like the idea, I'm going to jump back over to this rezoning here. Do you like the idea of trying to split zone it so that the front portion remains commercial along our main thoroughfare? And then the rear outdoor storage area could become industrial? Or would you like it all to be consistent one way or the other?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Gregor.
Does he first have to push the building back to 150 feet away from the center line of Now Then Boulevard?
Yeah, he's got to push the building back. I'm not sure, I'm guessing this is about 120 feet.
He's got to push back 30 feet, right?
So 30, 30 feet or so.
So I'd like to push, push the office out of it, what you have shown there.
Well, when we have a zoning district like that, you know, it's not exact necessarily. But as long as we specify. So the main difference is, as I outlined in the report somewhere, is the comparison between the commercial building requirements and the industrial building requirements. So rezoning it or actually leaving the front commercial, it's already commercial, would require Mr. Wagner to have 65% of the high quality materials on the exterior. So he would have to upgrade or add more windows or stone or whatever is considered Type A. The rear of the building could remain basically as is, under the industrial zone. So the commercial zone just requires a higher quality percentage of exterior material.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Gregor.
Did we give Perkins some variance or?
Yeah, Mr. Perkins was dealing with an existing developed property. So he was given a conditional use permit to vary from the material requirements to allow him to do that wood on the exterior of that front building.
I guess I was wondering more about his, why he doesn't have a hundred foot, why he doesn't have a buffer button?
He, well, yeah, an existing lot too versus a new development. But he also, yeah, did have some open space back there with a pond.
Did he get a variance or a waiver for his hundred foot setback or hundred foot buffer?
No, I believe he met it. I believe he had that distance from the property line up to his building. And he had a pond in that regard as well. He did get a variance for the.
He has a little pond down here.
Yep, but he did get a variance for the.
For the buffer zone?
No, the size of the accessory building. So generally, because the main principal use was smaller and he wanted the accessory building to be, to exceed the size of the front building, there was a variance in that regard.
Is there anything Mr. Wagner's proposing to store outside that doesn't look like it's already on the Perkins property?
No, he would have nothing, well, actually probably smaller equipment yet than Mr. Perkins. And not as much either, the way I'm understanding it, right?
We don't have as many pieces of heavy equipment or dump trucks. And most of the, most of the storage that we would do would be behind the building. And the other nice thing about being behind the other property is that, you know, it does do a better job of hiding the outside storage.
Right.
I like the fact that, yeah, he's really set everything back from Now Then Boulevard. And, you know, he purposefully chose to put the office area on that side so that we would see those windows and materials.
There is some outside storage that's, like, from the center line of the building and closer to Old Viking Boulevard, there is, you know, some area out there, but that's, that might be like skid steer trailers and pickups parked there. We're not going to put a lot of materials in that front area of the building. It's more for staging or temporary parking. So most all of our storage would be up against the fence where Perkins is and behind the other private property that faces Now Then Boulevard.
So you could definitely attach a condition that states that with the smaller equipment being, you know, six feet or below. But we also could have either, you know, a deciduous tree with a large canopy or some trees that he wants to plant anyway along, along Old Viking Boulevard to screen at a higher level than. to screen at a higher level than the six-foot fence. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Moore?
I have a question about the buffer zone along this one right here.
Oh, the existing house on Nowland Boulevard?
Yeah, yep. If that's actually intended use to be commercial later, does that buffer zone really apply?
It applies, but I would agree it's not necessarily as large of a concern because this is an interim use that will not, you know, is intended to be converted someday to commercial.
Planner Stockman?
Mm-hmm. The 100-foot buffer on the eastern border that borders that house on Old Viking Boulevard, 7860. It shows that their house sits 204 feet and 146 feet off of the boundary lines. Would that then also help with the 100-foot buffer?
Well, absolutely. I think it's positive. I mean, generally speaking, the applicants are supposed to provide a buffer on their own property. But from my understanding, Mr. Wagner has spoken with Mr. Mevison, who owns this land. And it sounded as though he was satisfied with the six-foot fence in that regard.
I thought Jerry, I spoke with Jerry last night. I called him on the phone. It's the second time I've talked with him. And he, I thought he was going to be here tonight, but I don't think he is. He's recently planted, he's planting more and more trees on that vacant parcel. I asked him what his plans were with that, and he doesn't plan on putting any buildings on the parcel. He's just treating it as a nice green buffer area. There's a row of very mature trees that he's very protective over, yeah, on the eastern side of that.
Right above here.
That parcel there, right in there. And he's planted quite a few other trees. I think he planted 30 maple trees or something three feet from the property line, which would be very close to where our fence would be the way I'm showing it along there, yeah. And I think even across the back, he's got those maple trees now and there. Right now, they're only three feet high, but he was quite satisfied. His bigger concern was how far the fence was going to be away from the property line and if we were going to mow and maintain that, because he'd just like to keep it green and mowed up to the fence. You know, this buffer is quite perplexing to me because it somehow just, I wasn't made aware of this until about a week ago, that the buffer area was even required. The other thing Jerry mentioned, the property owner mentioned, is that on the southern border, he's got a very dense growth of pine trees already on his side of the property line across there. I don't think it goes all the way to the western corner there. But behind his house, he's got very dense, very mature pine trees. And he mentioned that he's certainly not concerned, you know, on that southern border. It sounded like he was going to be here tonight to, you know, express his opinion or hear what was going on too, but he's not. But when I talked with him last night, he didn't have any issues with that fence being... I mentioned it was going to be a couple of feet away, and he was concerned about even mowing that, so he talked about moving it closer. He didn't seem concerned. He felt he had quite a buffer already.
That was going to be one of my questions, was if we did move the fence in six feet, eight feet, whatever, who is going to care for the other side of the fence? And why would it then turn into an eyesore? It would be nice if the property owner would maintain it. So would it be unheard of to have the buffer on the other side of the fence then too? Or instead of?
So you mean like plant trees on the neighbor's property?
No, on the inside of the fence line.
Oh, you could do that too, yeah. I mean, there'd be, you know, with the big equipment, it might be a worry for Mr. Wagner whether he's going to, you know, run into them and how, you know, because then you have to have an area that's not gravel. So that's a little bit of a hassle, but, you know, it definitely could be done. But you could also plant trees on the neighbor's lot too, if that were okay with the neighbor. You know, maybe if Mr. Mevison is satisfied with the fence in itself, maybe we want to focus our landscaping on the two Boulevard areas.
Is the, is the 120 versus 150-foot setback an issue, or is that an old, is that...
We, it's actually more like a 15-foot difference right now because we have moved the building back 15 feet further than was shown there. So it's really more like a 15-foot difference. And, I mean, I would prefer to leave it at 135 feet off. But if it's necessary to move it back 15 more feet, I guess it's not the end of the world. I just have to see how it all fits in with the fence and the landscape.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mayor.
So Liz, as far as the buffer, and it's unfortunate, Mr. Wagner didn't know about this until recently. But as far as that, in order to change that, the commission certainly can make a recommendation, but there would have to be another public hearing to change the ordinance. Is that correct?
Right. We can advertise for a variance to vary from that. I believe that, you know, this is a hardship property and that the variance could very much apply to this parcel. Or if you wanted to change the ordinance, then that change would apply to him and everybody that comes after him.
That's always the thing we need to remember at T and Z. What we decide, does it affect everybody in the city? And is there a better way of doing it so that he can get the land use he wants without opening the doors to everybody to do the similar thing?
Right. I mean, it's an existing lot of record that's been there for 40-plus years. The shape is definitely an issue or a hardship. And just the amount of usable area that it takes up, you know, there definitely becomes a point where it's unreasonable. And it doesn't matter if it's commercial or industrial. You know, you've got this whole front that's setback area. So you've got a small rectangle in the middle that's buildable, and then...
It's basically, it's getting to be a nonusable back lot.
Right, because then if you, even if this were commercial up here and you had to park everybody in the back, it would be very difficult. So... But, yeah, it's... And the fact too, that, you know, he's surrounded by these interim uses. It's an older part of town.
So what's the, is there a proposal that we could... So if I look at the back of the lot, it feels like with the cover that's there on the existing lots, I think there's some, you know, I would say, what's the variance there that we could provide so that he can not have to plant a bunch of trees where there's already a forest? And on the front of the lot where there's residents there today, could we, as he moves that back another 15 feet, can he continue with the trees at least around their place, even though there is some trees there, so there's like a double coverage of trees between the existing properties?
Here, you mean, or...
Yeah, around that corner.
This right here?
Because he's going to have trees on that, on the front of the property even as it wraps around that L-shaped piece. That would block his property from the existing neighbors and then eliminate the need for it on the backside. But it still isn't going to be 100 feet, but it would at least be similar to what he proposed in the back.
Right, and that's what, you know, could be proposed as part of the variance is you come up or recommend something that's reasonable and does the job. Now, in this area, it's a little bit of a concern because he does have his septic indicated there. So we would have to take a look at that. But if he pushes his building back a little, he might have some space here.
But even the septic is going to be green space, right?
Pardon me?
Because septic's...
Can't plant in it, though.
It's going to be green space.
Oh, green space, yes, yes.
And then he could have another row of trees behind their trees to provide some additional coverage. And where the septic is, the view is going to be on a... I would agree with him. It's probably one of the nicer buildings that's going to be built in Nowland. Because I agree, I think it's, I think you get into the, is it reasonable to think that if we say, hey, you got to follow this yellow path all the way around, you can hardly access the back of this lot, which is not reasonable for him as a business owner?
So then what we would do is we would renotice everything. We would continue the hearing until May. And then the variance would be noticed along with the rezoning and the interim use permit again. And then we would reconsider. So we would ask him to bring back or submit a landscape plan that we could, that reflects what you're recommending tonight.
And does that, if we propose, hey, this is a hardship lot, does the hardship lot allow for 135-foot setback versus 150-foot setback?
That's the county, isn't it?
Pardon me?
Is that the county?
No, we have 150-foot requirement from the center line of all arterial roads, main roads. And then it's 120 from local roads. So that is a city requirement. And yes, if you really want to do, you could vary from that. At the same time, you're approving the variance. But I guess, to me, it's, I think he's got enough space to work with it and to still get into his backyard. But it is possible, to answer your question.
What does this existing house lot become usable for if there's a 150-foot setback? And then they have a 100-foot buffer?
Well, see, but that's only if you're a budding residential, so that wouldn't apply for them.
They still can't have too much room?
Yeah, it's still not a large lot. I mean, it could eventually even be purchased by Mr. Wagner or Mr. Perkins, you know, somebody adjoining.
So, questions earlier to comment. Does this first yellow box even apply if that's already a commercial property?
Yeah, the way the ordinance reads, it does apply to existing residences, either the land use or the zoning. But like I said, I agree, it's not as large of a concern. I mean, we do want to respect the folks that live there.
Absolutely.
You know, they're going to be there for a while, probably. So we definitely want to respect them.
I would imagine, though, if anyone was going to be upset, it probably was going to be them.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I mean, it's changed, right? It's a grass, it's a hay field today, or, and it's changing. I also look at, it could be a holiday gas station, which would be significantly different from light emissions and traffic for 24 hours a day than...
Well, this is clearly not 24 hours a day either.
So I get it. I mean, it's like, it's changed and it's tough. I think it's a beautiful building that's going to go there.
Yep, change is hard, and especially if it's in your backyard or across your street.
So, a couple of things if I could add. Currently, we've been in business for 26 years in Andover on Seventh Avenue. In a residential area, we have eight acres there. But we're very well sheltered and shielded where we are. A lot of people think we're a landscaping company or something, even though there's so much landscaping there. But we're burned in and fenced in. It's not that noticeable where we are. So we've had very low impact for the neighbors. Liz has mentioned, we don't have many people coming and going. I mean, our employees, other than the four in the office, employees all report directly to the job sites. They come into the yard once in a while to get some stuff. But it's pretty darn quiet, you know, there. The other thing is, on the setback from Nowland Boulevard, you know, we pushed it back 15 feet. And if we did that and ran the fence straight over, kind of the way we were planning, we would be 15 feet off of that back property line there and could put, I don't know, I mean, spruce trees is usually the first thing, I guess, a person thinks of, or I think of for screening. Maybe there's something better to use for that. But to your point, it could be a second row of trees in back of the trees that are already there.
It feels like that, maybe it could compromise, right?
Yeah, and then it also is who, you know, I don't know how much maintenance you have in that area that probably grow up in some knee-high grass and kind of stay that way or something around the trees. It probably might have grown up in native grasses or something, but, which would probably be fine. But I guess, so it would be my preference, especially if you need to do any kind of setback on the fence against the Jerry Mevison property there, if we kind of get a squeeze play going on behind the building, and we're pushing it in on both sides. So if we could get a variance to go with 135-foot setback up Nowland Boulevard, that would be our preference.
Would that take an ordinance change, right?
No, just, we could do it by variance and notice it for next.
You'd have to notice the variance, though. If you couldn't decide it tonight, you'd have to notice a variance.
Which, I mean, again, back to this existing property, that wouldn't, that would actually help when this becomes commercial as well, right? I mean, it gives them a little bit more room.
Well, if you look at the other properties, even the... There's no way, there's no way the Perkins property needs that setback either.
I'm just saying, you're making it better than the surrounding areas, for sure.
Better than, is it 150? No, but it's significantly better than the other three properties that are there, four properties that are there.
I mean, I like QuickTrip, but...
And there is plenty of room for trails there still, so we're not, you know, squeezing out any trails or anything.
So how do we move forward, Liz? Because I'd like to, I'd like to understand if it's, if we propose 135 feet and you have to come back with more of a, hey, what's your landscaping plan? And we say, I don't, are we in agreement that on the property, on the back side of the L-piece, that's fine as is because there's an existing, there's an existing cover from the, from the existing, or from the property owner, and it doesn't sound like that's a huge deal, and he wasn't here to express that it was a huge deal? So we leave that as is, without trees. And on the front, we say, can you run a small spruce or whatever that looks like along that L-shaped piece there? A line too, you know, it's got to obviously work with the septic system when you get into the corner.
Yeah, I would say along this line and then right in here, if we can get a few, and then leave this open for septic.
And is that fence line with the 135-foot setback, or is that fence line of 120, the way it's shown?
No, the fence can go...
It can be the 135.
So that's showing 135 right there?
Right, now it's drawn as 120.
Okay, so you back it up 15, and that would be your row of trees that you'd put in?
You got it.
I'm with you.
Okay. So this is taken care of. The fence would be on the property line here. He would have the fence as is along the Old Viking side, and then show landscaping in this area. Submit the landscape plan, we would notice the variance. Uh, for the screening and the setback. And, let's see.
So the variance would be no screening on the backside of the property, and it would be screening, a fifteen-foot screening on the front side of the property?
No, the variance would be the fence as screening.
Okay.
As opposed to the hundred and twenty-five foot buffer.
Okay.
Or the hu- the physical, you know, separation there.
And the variance at the front, so I'm clear, would be what? Fence and fifteen foot of trees, fifteen foot width of trees would be the screening variance?
Right, the buffer, right, would be lesser amount of, um. Again, the screening would be a fence and the row of trees on this side. And this side is the green space. Uh, from the mound, and then. Then, uh, along the fence.
So, is that a motion, or is that, you need to note that and talk about it next month?
Right, that's, it's fine, just the discussion.
Okay.
And then, right, we'll, we'll approve the official plan if you accept it next month. So the outstanding items would be the rezoning, recommendation for that, and then. Um, which would affect our building materials. Possibly, so.
That rezoning won't affect him at all, if, if you.
Well, he's C-one now, yeah, so if we, he has more building material, material requirements under the C-one than he does the industrial. But if we split zone it, then only the front portion would be subject to that.
But this whole building meets the commercial zoning specs right now, right?
No, it meets the industrial.
Meets the industrial specs, the front of the building would meet first commercial, the back of the building meets industrial, is that what?
I think currently, Liz, I mean, if, if you, if you count the, the stucco embossed panels as needing, needing the requirement. The, the portion outside the fence is a hundred percent non-metal surfaces, so it exceeds the commercial.
Well, the shapes are metal, right, so there's very little, little, very little.
And, and actually, I was just looking for something to break up the front, so.
No, I agree, we, I like.
We're actually coming, yeah, it may even, we're trying to find additional ways to enhance the looks, so. We're not quite settled yet on the looks of that front, but, but I think it exceeds even with the metal digs, it still exceeds the commercial requirement, doesn't it? But part of what we're doing there is, you know, it, it seems most important to me to keep. Everything toward Nowland Boulevard and everything outside the fence.
Nice.
Looking as good as you can.
Right.
And, but, so what, what I'm showing with the office or the, or the shop in the back. The shop in the back actually toward Old Viking Boulevard would be all metal panels, be two different colors, you know. Contrasting colors, darker in the bottom, lighter on the top, but what I'm hoping to get you guys to approve is, is I'm going over and above. On what people are really gonna see outside the fence, I, I just couldn't come up with a good way on that side of the shop facing. Old Viking Boulevard to really enhance the looks using something, using the stucco embossed panels or something else, so. It just made more sense to save money where people are gonna see that.
Well, you do have the, the columns here with, that are stone.
Correct.
And then, what if you were to put a, you know, like a little eyebrow here or something?
Well, and that's exactly what I was, that's one of the.
Or what is in here on the interior, could you add maybe another window?
It'd have to be like a fake window.
Oh, okay.
Because that's a secured type vault area or a third room.
The main building is gonna be behind the fence, and the fence is gonna have the.
Stone on it.
Pillars as well.
Right, exactly. The other thing is, is that isn't shown there, is we're thinking that our, our sign is gonna go on that side of the office, right now it looks a little blank there.
Here?
But yes, that's where the, our municipal builders will go and sign and go.
So how do you wanna proceed then? He's, so what he's saying is, you know, he doesn't have any metal on this side. It's all windows, stone, and the stucco look. And, um, this is the Nowland Boulevard side, which is the stucco. Now technically, stucco is not a type A, which is the highest quality, the highest quality is either a stone, brick. Poststone, brick, you know, real stone, or windows. But, you know, stucco is definitely a class B, which is just the next step down. And the, I would classify the peaks here as sort of an accent, which really is not a big deal as far as metal. And this side, you know, faces where that septic system will be. He technically doesn't have to provide any upgraded materials on the south side, so what I did is I applied what he did show to the other. One of the other sides. As sort of a credit, you know, but. Generally, it's, it's a very nice looking building. And I agree, if there's a sign here, it won't be as blank, but. So what's the feeling then regarding commercial, commercial versus the industrial? Cause what he has meets the industrial standards. Um, well, actually, yeah, the, the, let me see how it reads here. The primary, so for commercial building materials. Exterior finish shall consist of grade A, B, or C materials, except that the exterior building finish for any side. Facing a street shall be sixty-five percent grade A. Which is the windows and stone. So the stucco C is a grade B. Um, you're allowed thirty-five percent grade B. But maybe with that credit from the south side, stone, we'd be okay. I'm not sure, I'll have to reevaluate that, but. What's your feeling on the, I mean, it would be a pretty minor increase, I think, on, you know, the front part, and then the rear part would be. Remain the same. If that works out.
Mister Chair?
Yes, Mayor.
This is really dragging. I'm sorry, but.
Yeah.
Um, why don't, Liz, why don't you get together with Mr. Wagner, come up with, now that you've got a general idea of what's acceptable. Come up with a plan that, that, so we know what, what the material actually is.
Okay.
Um, and that it meets the co- meets the code under whatever B or C or A category. But come up with something now that there's a general idea that we, that we can recommend to the commission and then. Propose a variance at the next meeting, so that information can get out ahead of time, cause we're gonna sit here and debate. Things, we're not even sure what the material is.
Yeah, exactly, I don't wanna debate materials.
I think the idea that it's fairly clear, the variance could give him the room in the back of the property, if Nevesons are okay with that, it doesn't affect. Everybody else in the city, then you worry about the front, it sounds like he's got a great plan for that corner.
Yep.
So I think it could be worked out, but.
Okay.
It's like pulling hands together.
Is there an action to decide whether it's a commercial or industrial split lot, or is that for next time as well?
Well, we wouldn't officially decide till next time anyway, but it does affect the material. Whether it's sixty-five percent grade A or fifty percent grade A, so.
Is it your professional opinion, what, what do you think? We'd be better with two, uh, zones?
Mister Chair?
Yes.
I would just say probably yes, because you can go to the residents and say, it's still commercial where you see it.
Okay.
It's industrial back where you don't see it, and I think it's an easier sell that way, and it, it.
You got a point there.
How else if you have the warehouse storage too?
Cause it's not, actually not changing on the back part at all.
Well, back would be the industrial, but he could have the warehouse back there, because again, it's industrial back. Where they're not seeing it, where they're seeing it out in front, it's still gonna be commercial, which it's been for a long time. Before we were a city, so that way, what you're changing is not visible to residents.
Yeah, it's a good way to look at it.
I'll ask the public again if there's any comments from the public about this. Seeing none on, are, are we gonna table this or continue?
So the motion should be to continue this till next month and to notice the variance.
Okay, we're waiting for, anybody like to make a motion to. Continue this to next month, so.
I will, just give me one second to figure out why we're gonna make a motion. The only, the last thing is, does he, uh, Mr. Wagner need to fill out additional paperwork to apply for the variance for next month as well?
Mm-hmm, yeah, there'll be an application. We, yeah, we have plenty of escrow left, so we, we'll have him fill out the proper application.
All right, so that, so we can get this done and wrapped up next month.
To the variance, you have to meet the state statutes of the variance, and that's what they have to figure out.
All right, I'm gonna make a motion to continue this to the May meeting. With, uh, Liz and Mr. Wagner to bring back a proposal on landscaping and building materials. And, uh, variance proposal. And industrial versus commercial proposal. And setback, one-thirty-five versus one-fifty.
I'll second that.
Perfect.
Commissioner Alders.
You good with that?
I'm good with it, thank you.
Perfect.
Commissioner Alders made it, Commissioner Perrell seconded, ready for the discussion.
Mister Chairman? See, it also includes the approval by the, meaning all the engineering standards as well.
Oh.
Or approval by our city engineer.
Brilliant, nice one, very good decision.
Yes. But that doesn't necessarily have to be done before next month.
Okay.
The engineering part, I mean, uh, cause really, if he did not have the outdoor storage or the rezoning, then this would have been. Just a standard site plan review that could have gone to staff, so, anyway.
Okay.
Yeah, but we won't forget about that, the engineering standards.
Okay, there's a motion, there's a section on the floor, any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, so next month.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the. The next thing on the agenda is for discussion is a request by Steve Madsen, eight-four-zero, eight-four-eight-zero, Norris Lake Road, for the following three actions. Pending submittal of additional information. Number one, an interim use permit to allow the operation of extended home business per sec- section eleven dash four dash three. Dot B of the city code, and, uh, second item is a mining permit to allow dredging of black dirt from western portions of the property in compliance with. Section eleven dash four dash ten and six by the city code. And revocation of this conditional use permit issued, the third one is, is issued on September fourteenth, nineteen ninety-three. So. Turn it over to Liz for her.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Madsen's here tonight? We, uh, Becky Wozni works with the Inoka County Soil and Water District. She and I were, have been out on Mr. Madsen's property the last year or two, working with him on a wetland issue. Which has been resolved. At that time, we indicated that his. Existing conditional use permit for, uh, mining on the property, which was issued in nineteen ninety-three. Is expired for several reasons. The Army Corps had indicated a completion date ten years after that nineteen ninety-three issuance. And then the amount of material mined from the site has exceeded what was allowed under that conditional use permit. So, um, our office approached Mr. Madsen and asked that he consider either. Uh, reapplying for a mining permit if he wishes to continue, and then also addressing or legalizing the existing. Businesses that are present on the property, um, one of which is a garage door repair business. Which, you know, doesn't have hardly any, if any, outdoor storage. Um, but he also operates a septic system business and the excavating business where he was mining the material. Uh, he sells black dirt, he mixes it with compost, and just does kinda general excavating. So, I've been telling residents, um, you know, not just Mr. Madsen, that. It's very important to legalize these businesses, especially if you plan to remain long-term. As Nowland grows and as generally population increases in the city. Um, home businesses tend to be phased out as an option. Um, it's generally not something you're gonna find, you know, on a half-acre lot in Ramsey. We, home businesses require the space on the lots that Nowland has, so it is definitely. A, a benefit or a perk to property owners that have the land. Um, but it is important to legalize that, so that if the city should ever do away with home businesses in the long-term future. Then they're safe under, you know, their grandfathered in, under an existing permit. Anyway, so, this is a aerial photo of the Madsen property. Uh, his, his home is here, and this is his pool shed, so he lives on this bigger parcel, he also owns this smaller piece to the west. And rents the house. Uh, this is the pond that he mined out, uh, over quite a few years. And this graphic is showing just a, an enlarged, uh, enlargement of this area where he has outdoor storage. And then most of his kinda open stockpile of, uh, dirt and other materials is down in this area. So, uh, a lot of equipment outside here that would probably have to be addressed, uh, generally speaking. Under interim use permits, we do address that outdoor storage and how it looks from the public roads and neighboring properties. This is an overlay of what was the original mitigation plan. All mining projects have a mitigation plan, in other words, what is the maximum, uh, or completion? How is this gonna look when you're done mining it? So, this is what he had come up with in nineteen ninety-three. Um, as you can see, it, it's fairly close, I mean, the majority of the area, this area of water, open water is about eight acres. Um, I did talk with Ms. Wozni at the Soil and Water District today. Um, we had a discussion about, you know, the amount of material taken from the site, and. She's estimating that it probably exceeded what, exceeded the records that we have at the city. Because if this is, you know, the, the people that mine do have to pay for what, per yard for what they haul out. Um, but just based on the size of this area, at the eight acres. Six and a half feet deep, and parts of it are much deeper than that, she's guessing. Um, they, the state no longer allows you to mitigate or create a pond of this size and depth. So that. So that is something to talk, talk about, but she's estimating that there was close to eighty-six thousand cubic yards that had to come out of what you see here as water. Having said that, she did indicate that she would be okay if Mr. Madsen wanted to continue mining in these areas adjacent to the existing pond that have already been disturbed prior years for one or more reasons. The site, you know, initially was a sod farm, and just from general activity over the years. This is not pristine wetlands in this vicinity. What she did indicate, well, here again is another picture of the sod fields as they looked in nineteen ninety-one, before Mr. Madsen bought it and built the home and started digging. Part of his reason for buying this was he had to mitigate some wetland work that he had done up on a parcel in St. Francis. This was another map that we found in the file, and I think I have it oriented correctly. I believe that this curve here, this ditch, is, lines up with this curve here. It says phase one, two, three, and four. We, you know, there's a lot, file keeping back in the day wasn't always the greatest. This is one of those files that sometimes we're not a hundred percent sure about what went on. This is just a clean drawing of the original mitigation plan. Something to note about it is the existing wetland that's up here along Norris Lake Road. And there was talk about how Mr. Madsen had to construct the driveway through the wetland to get to the home site. So in talking with Ms. Wasney today, I said, you know, what is required if Mr. Madsen wants to go forward with a new mining permit? And she highlighted this area in yellow where this existing, or original wetland is, and she said, he needs to stay out of this wetland area if he doesn't want to go through the permitting process with the DNR and the Army Corps and everybody else. So that's something that Mr. Madsen's going to have to decide. This is, you know, somewhat of a preserved area, in her opinion, which has not had a lot of disturbance, and that should be, would fall under the wetland rules. So mitigating, you know, whatever you dig out here would have to be replaced somewhere else. And so the permitting, generally she says, is not worth it for what you're getting out of it in terms of black dirt or material. So that's something you'll have to decide in the next coming weeks. And if, you know, if we need to talk to her again, we certainly can. But more importantly, from a city standpoint, what we're looking at is legalizing those home businesses. And as you know, we've had quite a few of those interim use permits. Mr. Madsen has applied, he's also made application for the mining permit, and we'll have to decide if he wants to move forward with that and get all the outstanding, meet the requirements of all the submission, submission requirements is what I'm trying to say. So if we were to move forward, well, actually, either way. I mean, he doesn't meet the requirements of the current conditional use permit that was issued in ninety-three. So the best thing to do would be to revoke that CUP and just get it off our books. He can't operate under the existing CUP. So if he wants to continue mining, he'll have to come back with the information and obtain the necessary approvals. If he wants to mine or dig in the periphery areas of the existing pond or lake, if you want to call it that, that would be a reasonable request, according to Ms. Wasney. She would like him to stay away from the northerly parts. So mostly, this was just discussion, informational. You know, if you, if something comes to mind about, you know, a concern or something you want to see addressed, now's the time to say it, and then we would be back. We would need public hearings noticed and additional plans submitted to move forward on this. And if Mr. Madsen wants to say anything, Mr. Chair, are you okay with that?
Would you like to make some comments?
I guess I do it. I don't really expect to do any more digging out there. I buy a ton of compost and black dirt from upper composting. So what I'd like to be able to do is bring it home and screen it and pulverize it to mix it, and then haul it out of there. So I don't really plan on making any more water where I'm at. Does that make any sense?
No.
Mm-hmm, I think so. I think it's, it's good if, yeah, if you don't want to.
I was thinking about digging that ditch up, if she don't want me to do that, I won't, you know, it's not that big a deal.
Up here? Is up here is where you were thinking?
Yeah, yeah, there's that ditch coming across there, right there.
Mm-hmm.
And I thought I would open that up, not that in front, but just coming down.
Down there, okay.
But if, if it's a hassle, I won't do it. I'll just, I talked to the compost guy today, and he said he'll set me up with everything I need to buy.
Oh.
So I don't even have to do any digging, but I'd like to bring it home to pulverize it, because
Right.
He pulverizes, he puts it in the big stockpile, so then when you ram it with a front end loader or whatever, it balls it all back up.
Okay.
And I run my truck underneath the conveyor and the pulverizer, so everything, when it gets pulverized, it drops right into the truck. So there's no equipment packing it or anything, so it generally just works a lot better for most people. I mean, if you have a skid loader and stuff, it all doesn't matter, but if people are going to shovel it by hand, it's a big issue for them.
So we're looking to revoke the ninety-three conditional use permit, and then it sounds like he does not need to reapply for a mining operations permit, he just needs to get interim use permit for the garage door business, the septic system, and then the black dirt sales.
Yeah, if he's going to bring material on and then take it back off, I believe we could allow that, especially if we designate the area that has to be, you know, contained and erosion control prevention and that kind of thing, we could allow that under the interim use permit, so. For the home business, is that what you're thinking? Okay.
Yeah, I guess so.
Yeah, we can talk more about it, so. Okay, well, that actually works out well, I mean.
This really is her handle.
Oh, sorry, Mary.
Chair, I'm just doing a statement, every question, page seven, number two. And it goes with interim use permit for extended home businesses. Now, there's three separate businesses listed there. Do we, are we, what do we require three separate requests? Because each of those requests could contain items specific to those, and also, do we not, after one year of non-use of a use, that then that permit is invalided?
Goes away, right, right.
Yeah, so.
I've talked to Attorney Rupi about that before with prior things that had multiple uses, and you can either do the findings separately or together, as long as you're itemizing the conditions for each use. So it is, I would consider it just a single application, and we'd be reviewing or establishing conditions for a couple different things. I mean, there's, there's a lot of overlap, in other words, you know, uses the material for the septic jobs or whatever. And I'll make sure we have enough, you know, escrow and everything to process it. And then I'll, I'll double check with Rupi, but I'm ninety-nine percent sure that we've had this discussion and that we have other examples of doing this. I just can't think right now what they are.
I guess my concern is if you have the three separate businesses, and let's say they stopped doing the garage door service and installation.
Mm-hmm.
Well, then how do you work the other two?
Does the remainder still apply?
Right.
Or is that valid?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, I, sure, I understand what you're asking.
I got a question to ask you too, Liz, is, that when they're removing the CUP, is all the things that have been taken care of, the fees, and also everything satisfied with the county?
No, we have to do a public hearing to revoke a CUP. We haven't done any public hearings for Mr. Madsen yet, so that'll be in May also.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. So.
But now, there was a ten year, in ten years, they're supposed to restore that, has that all been restored?
Oh, this, yeah, I talked to Ms. Wasney about that, and she would want to inspect it, but from what she sees, you know, as long as he's re-vegetated everything, and he's, you know, generally within the vicinity of the approved plan, there's just, you know, some key things. She's not going to make a big deal about, you know, the shape of it differing or anything. She just wants to check slopes, side slopes going into the pond, and then make sure everything got re-vegetated and there's no. I'm not sure every little thing she looks for, but she would do an inspection.
Is all the fees to this city's been taken care of?
Well, we would address that based on what he wants to go forward with, so.
Okay, okay.
I did get, he did fill out two applications so far, one for mining and one for IUPs.
Okay.
So we'll make sure that everything's accurate when we bring it back. Okay? Yes.
Yes, Councilman, Council lady.
A question, so Liz, you're saying you did fill out a permit for mining, which is here, but he's saying there won't be any mining.
Right, so we'll just do away with that, and we, what we would do is take those fees that he submitted for the mining and apply those to the IUPs.
And then, starts the mining, has there been mining, looked like from two thousand three to two thousand twelve, whatever many records? And then there was mining thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, sixteen, and then no record seventeen. So.
So what?
Mining was done and that the city was paid for the.
That's a good point, that's a good point, because the mining ordinance does, if he's done mining, and if he has records that we don't have, we can ask for copies of those. I know that in seventeen and eighteen, no reminders got sent out, so I know he didn't, I don't believe there was, you know, the yearly fee paid. So you'll have to let us know if you've had any mining the last two years or taken anything out of there. And we, we would love to update our records too, if you have records from those years, but we will work on those things.
Well, those other years, the past years.
Uh-huh, yeah.
About five hundred dollar checks in every year, because they decided that it wasn't worth the paperwork to figure out the seven cents a yard issues. And I don't have any of that, because my ex shredded everything after seven years. And I, I'm not sure if, somebody told me the bank might be able to give me this stuff, but I changed from the First National to the Bank of America, and I don't know exactly what year that was. Will they be able to give me old records?
Possibly, but I don't know if there's a way we can track it either, because I've gone through all the files that I would know about, and there were no records for, from two thousand three to two thousand twelve. I mean, the last two years, I'm sure you know what you've done, which wouldn't be a big deal, and you say you paid just like flat amounts for.
Yeah, I was paying five hundred dollars a year for quite a while there, because they said that it, it costs more money to figure out what I was selling than the seven cents a yard was bringing in. So then I said, that's fine, I'll just pay the five hundred dollars. So I was bringing checks in to the, I can't think of her name, but the gal here that was here before.
Oh, Cory?
Cory, yeah. And I didn't realize that she wasn't writing it down, so to speak.
Well, there's probably records somewhere, but we might have to do a little more looking. We'll look into that whole piece there, that missing piece.
So that feels like that's separate from the planning and zoning, so what do we need to do?
Yeah. That's above my pay grade.
So what's they ask of the planning and zoning?
So there's really nothing, no motion or anything needed right now.
Okay.
Just discussion.
So next month, we're going to come back with a interim use permit discussion on three businesses.
Right.
We're going to revoke the conditional use permit from nineteen ninety-three, and we're going to tear up the conditional use permit for mining, because we're not going to do mining out there anymore.
Right, we'll do away with that.
Got it.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Regan.
A question in reference to the existing conditional use permit. Can he just go file something himself to say that he wants to cancel it? Why does it need to be revoked?
There's a process, because a conditional use permit runs with the land, there's a, you know, there's a state statute and a process you have to follow to revoke those.
He can't just go down there himself and say, I want to cancel or void the conditional use permit as of this date, and it's done?
No, right, it requires a public hearing.
It does, to, to get rid of the condition.
It does, yeah. So that's the process.
One other question, the area that Ms. Wasney said not to mine in, I guess that doesn't really align with what was the underlying wetland, I guess, what's her reason for saying, don't touch that, or what's her, gives her authority to do that, I guess?
Well, she's. Well, she's looking at this original, partly this, or, you know, that there was a, is and was a wetland there.
Right.
She's just going off of the existing aerial photo.
More stating that she, he can't touch that because it's outside of what was the mining limit, not because it's a wetland?
Well, again, ten acre mining permit, kind of, oh my God, eight and a half, maybe it's a lot.
Right, and that's what she said, if it were down here in this area that's no longer pristine wetland, or whatever you want to call it. But she's saying this has virtually been untouched for so many years, you know. It's officially classified a wetland where this not, isn't necessarily, so if her, not that you can't do it, but it would be too big of a headache probably to make it worthwhile.
You would have to.
I'll probably be retired in a year or two, so.
Yeah, I mean, there'd be so much permitting, and you'd have to have a wetland delineation, and, you know, the cost probably is just not.
Yeah, that's, well, my only question is, why could she restrict it if it's not a wetland?
You'd have to delineate. Okay.
Okay, should we close the meeting now?
Sure.
Somebody might like to make a motion to close the meeting?
I'll make a motion, your jury.
One second.
One second.
All right, thanks. Everybody speaks.
All in favor, right?
Hi.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Too late.
You're too late.
Next one there.
Was that, was there a call for floor items, are we supposed to?
No, we don't do them anymore.
Don't do them.
Cut them off.
Just that counsel.
That's a counsel's decision.
I must have missed that.